Work session of the mayor and city council will come to order. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to start with the budget. Get as far as we can by 7:00 o'clock, then we'll do the Bear Branch Stream Restoration briefing. When that's done, then we'll come back to the budget. And we'll go on from there. And hopefully, we can cut it off somewhere around 8:00, 8:30 to allow the staff to get out of here. So with that, you want to make an opening statement, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I did supply counsel with a copy of the proposed, my letter for the proposed budget, which is presented without a tax increase. It maintains the city's real property tax rate at .71 cents.
And your water.
Also keeps the special taxing district we have in as well, which is .03% for 100. We also, again, have tried to provide this to the council paperless so that we can, again, further our golden paperless government while saving taxpayer dollars. Several accomplishments from last year's proposed budget that we were able to move forward with, the creation of the Safety Compliance Officer to review methods and procedures utilized by city staff, contractors, vendors, and other utility workers. The Department of Public Works did many enhancements for our crosswalks. The fire marshal focused on the notification of the statewide tenure smoke detector for those residents. We continue the efforts of economic development. I'm also happy to report, which many of you all know, the Maryland Municipal League and its elected officials from across the state with their work helped to restore some of the highway user funds. So you'll see those, some additional funding in there as well. Capital Improvement Program does the fleet, program for the fleet at 643,500, which has replacements for the Refuge Packer, the front-end loader, and the mowing tractor. Also scheduled for replacement of pickup trucks and vans for the parking wrecks. And it also includes the police vehicles. We are trying to keep up. And I think we've done that almost every year, been able to keep up with our replacement plan, which is, my first guide here at City Hall was really not followed all the time. So we've tried to keep that intact. There is some new taxes on gas and diesel fuel. We're expecting some, and we're moving to some synthetic lubrication, so that requires some additional funding as well. And with that, I think, I just want to thank Michelle Saylor, our director, and her staff for the hard work they did, and all the department heads for the work that they did to make sure we presented the council with a balanced budget. So, Mr. President, I'll turn it over to Ms. Saylor.
All right, Mayor, just note a couple of things. The budget's available for the people watching from home on the Laurel website. It not only lists the whole budget, it also lists the members of various departments and the committees at the beginning of the budget, so you can see who's doing the work for us, the volunteers and so on. And the, there's also expenditure and revenue highlights. With that, I'm going to move to Michelle. And Michelle, if you'll just, when every person gets up there to talk about their part of the budget, just give us the page you're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I submitted to you this evening a package of supplementary materials. You have three pages of pie graphs. As you can, as you have seen before, we have provided to you a line item budget. And within that account structure are roll-up categories. So these pie charts are just subtotals of the various categories. So there is one pie chart for revenues, and you have your local taxes, which is the single largest revenue source that we have. And that $21 million number includes the real estate tax, as well as the personal property tax and the associated interest and penalties on late payments. So that in itself is $21,66,433 and is 61.55% of the total budget. I'm sorry, I should have started with the fact that this is a balanced budget as required by law. So I'll just lead you to those pie charts. I'm going to start and go over the revenues at this point until the break. I could also draw your attention to page 12 in your document. That's also the same breakdown of the revenue categories. But in addition to that, you have the FY '17 actual, since that's our most recently completed fiscal year, the FY 2018 budgeted, and then the FY 2019 proposed, requested. And we've provided the difference therein. Excuse me. Now, while you're looking at the difference column, and you see that it is a difference of over $2 million between FY '18 and FY '19, actually, the calculation to the FY '17, there's a lot smaller difference. So while between '18 and '19 is a $2 million increase, comparing the FY '17 actuals to the FY '19 projected is really only a difference of $700,627. So obviously, we're going through the FY '17 budget. We're in the middle of it. In the middle of that year, we're preparing the FY '18, so we don't have benefit of all those actual numbers. So trying to balance all the needs and the numbers and remain conservative because we don't want to overshoot the goals. So that gives you those comparisons, as well as other comparisons of the expenditures by line item category. And another way to break down the expenditures is by department category. So we have a comparison of compensation, operating capital, miscellaneous financial uses, and debt service, as well as a breakdown of general government, public safety, public works, parks and recreation, and non-departmental. On page 18 begins the line item details of the revenue budget. We, each year, the state certifies to all the towns our assessable base that we use and to which we apply our tax rate to come up with our gross real estate tax revenue. And from that, we deduct any credits of which we're aware at the time. And so those are all enumerated for you in that detail note. So the base that we used to calculate the revenue was $2,862,218,749. This is an increase of almost $88 million from our FY '18 budget, the assessable base. However, when adjustments are made for new construction and reassessments, the difference between the '18 and the '19 was only 95, or I'm sorry, 87 million. I apologize. So from the number we used to do our '18 budget to the number that we're using to do our '19 budget was a difference of 88 million. However, the assessable base increased in between time, so our change was only 7 million. And it was actually a decrease based on abatements and appeals of assessment. The first line that you'll see there, the $280,135, that's the calculation of the 3 cents of the transit overlay tax. This is an additional 3-cent real estate tax rate applied to commercial areas in the city. Those funds have a direct expenditure in the budget. Those funds are used to make infrastructure improvements to the commercial areas. So those businesses, those property owners of commercial buildings are paying the extra 3 cents. Those 3 cents are dedicated to make a contribution to the local bus service, as well as to be transferred to the capital budget to make improvements to the roads in those areas and other infrastructure. At the bottom of page 18 starts the personal property tax revenue. We receive those assessments about every two to three weeks throughout the year, so it's not one big push, one annual billing. It's continual throughout the year for the three categories of individual, utility, and And again, this is based on a tax return filed by the businesses where their assets are determined to have value. The state sends us the assessment, and we generate the invoices for those bills. On page 19, the personal property tax continues with the corporate. And you can, you can see by the printout, this is, comes directly from our system, we create a separate revenue account for each tax year because those taxes, while they should be paid in that year, may not always be. So those assessments get caught up through ESTAP, and that we could be collecting for a previous year, and most certainly for the most recent year. It's not unheard of. So that's why you see all those various accounts. We have separate accounts for the interest and penalty. And then in the middle of page 19, one of our largest revenue sources is the local income tax share. And this is distributed to the city by the state, and it's based on 17% of what the county is being paid from the residence, from the personal income tax returns. We get a share of that. And that's determined by state law. It's in the tax code of the state of Maryland. Another one of the larger single amounts is the admissions and amusement tax. That's largely due to the movie theater. That's 5% of the gross ticket sales. And just as, as we go through these, I'm sorry if I could go back to local income tax for a moment. You can see in that far-left column, the FY '17 actual of $3.4 million. We didn't increase the FY '19 projection based on that because of the change in the tax code, not knowing how those changes may impact the share that the city got. So we didn't want to go too far forward and extend ourselves beyond. So we're comfortable with, with leaving it at $3.2 million. Actually, again, with the admissions and amusement tax, you'll see the FY '17 actual was $753,000, excuse me. And it is sometimes difficult to get a handle on it. Of course, I expect big receipts since the release of The Avengers last week. But we also found, in reviewing the printout that we get, this distribution, too, is, is based on a tax return filed by the owners of the various categories. Excuse me, that there is a facility that's outside the city limits, just across Route 1. I want to say it's called Climb Zone, but they've been paying the ANA, or the city's been receiving some ANA under the amusement park category. So we wanted to make the adjustment as well, that not knowing necessarily all the movies could make up the difference, but that we will not receive that quarterly anymore, now that we've notified the state that it's not in the city limits. The highway user tax, which is a big topic of discussion for several years, actually. We received notice through MML and made the adjustment to the revenue. So their projections that MML has received shows us getting $682,745. There is the licensing category, which includes the rental licenses, also the cable TV franchise fees. So there's an account, a revenue account there shown for Comcast, as well as Verizon. That represents the 5% of the subscription fees for city residents. And I should say, the revenue coordinator in my office, her assistants, she performed an extensive review of the revenues, computing three-year averages. And where we felt we were comfortable, we made those adjustments. Where there were other circumstances, like, yes, a lot of people still have cable, but there's also the dish, and a lot of younger people just watch online. So again, we didn't want to overshoot what was happening. In the permit category, I'm sorry, moving to page 20. The projects, the collaborat, those revenues are collaborative effort of the Fire Marshal's office working with economic and community development to see what projects are, where they are in the pipelines, and what we could reasonably expect, what permits we could reasonably expect to have filed during FY '19. So those projects are detailed there with the calculation of the permit fees for each individual project, for a total of $401,885 at the top of page 21. And you can see that this revenue source is one of those that's, you know, it's market-driven. It's one that we can't necessarily control whether it increases or decreases. We go with the project. So while in FY '17, the actual was just over $469,000, you know, we're, we're only projecting $401,885 for FY '19. So those are the kinds of increases and decreases that we have to work within. We are not currently projecting any federal grants. This is an account mostly, excuse me, when you look where we've posted FEMA grant money. We didn't actually get the 2016 Jonas snowstorm until FY '17, so that was $86,000 in FY '17. So we're not currently projecting any federal funds. There are state grants. Those there are detailed, the largest of which is the State Aid for Police Protection, where the Office of the Chief of Police works with all the departments to compile all the expenditures having to do with the Police Department, with the department itself, with the facility maintenance, and other expenditures that come out of perhaps legal fees from the mayor's office, workers' comp, and, and other staff costs associated with providing services to the Police Department. So we're projecting $500,000 for that. And there's also the police aid supplement, which is based on a per capita rate for the And we have the county grants. There's several new grants for the Youth Services Bureau. And these are directly offset into what is now a separate department within Parks and Recreation. So listed under account 42512 are the various sources that they have confirmed we will be receiving funds during FY 2019. Also included in county grants are grants we've been receiving from Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, or recreation programs for youth, seniors, and teens. And then the Highway Safety Grant, which is for police activities like Ticket and Ticket and some of their other programs. General Government Service Charges. Included in that is the passport fees and zoning fees, fingerprinting done at the Police Department. And at the very bottom begins the sanitation service charges for special residential pickup, commercial, commercial recycling, the cost of the actual toters. So that's $182,000. We've also got facility rentals. So the next several, beginning with facility rentals, are Parks and Recreation programs. You have the swimming pool fees, the recreation program fees, the activity fees, concessions, and the senior program fees. And again, the Department of Parks and Recreation carefully scrutinizes their revenues and, and goes based on history and upcoming changes about which they're aware. And we have the police fines, the largest of which is the red light camera tickets. The FY '19 budget is a projection of $3.5 million. And the history for this bears, bears out at least that much. And the FY '17 actual is $3.7 million. We have code enforcement fines, investment interest, and then other miscellaneous revenue. We also receive a disposal fee rebate of $68,780. On page 24, we have the asset forfeiture account. This also has a direct expenditure within the Police Department budget. Those funds that are seized during police activity and held, if it is determined that the city keeps those funds, they're held in completely separate bank accounts. There's actually four separate bank accounts. One is a holding account, one is a checking account, one is for federal cases, and one is for state cases. So if it gets returned to the defendant, we return it. But if it's, if we're able to keep it, if the city has awarded those funds, we put it into the appropriate state or federal account. And then the Police Department puts forward requisitions to utilize those funds for police supplies or equipment. And so that reflects just, again, there's a $45,000 offset in the police budget. And that's so that you can see those funds, how they become utilized through the budget, even though they're held separately initially. This is how we bring it through. Then we have a number of other miscellaneous revenues. The $163,959 is the detailing. So in addition to the 5% of the cable subscriptions, we also receive 3% from each of the carriers, Comcast and Verizon. Those two are held in accounts off to the side, and when they're utilized, again, brought through the budget or the CIP. And so this details what we're using that PEG money, as we call it, what we're using the PEG money for. There's also the inclusion of the developer impact fees, which offsets current expenditures the city incurs while a development is being constructed. Then I'm showing the reimbursements to the city from the Speed Camera Fund, which, again, held completely separately until you allocate it. These reimbursements offset the, and it's an estimate on my part, based on what we've experienced before. So you have to have a sworn officer review the films of the violations. And since we pay them through the city's payroll, this account, or this one line, will reimburse the city for those funds. And then the other line is for equipment that's budgeted in the Police Department budget. We no longer have, are holding any loans on behalf of the fire rescue. So this one last line is just because they do have the FY '17 history, when the fire department still had its last loan. And then the use of designated funds is the appropriation between the school surcharge retention fund and the public safety surcharge, the city share, that we're using those funds to offset public safety expenses, as well as some of our activities, like the mayor's summer job program and other instructional activities that are throughout the budget. So that, that is the revenue budget. So that, that is the revenue budget.
I turned it on, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you. Don't point a camera at it. Just from the podium, that microphone right here, and it's on. Like I say, if you state your name and address for the record, and have at us.
Hi, I'm Joanna Smith, one of the project engineers with Prince George's County Department of the Environment, and I live in Bowie, Maryland.
My name is Austin Byers. I'm a century engineering, I'm a design engineer for the project, and I live in Mount Erie, Maryland.
Thank you for having us. We wanted to present the project before we start full-on design. Prince George's County has involved with the Bear Branch restoration for many years. We did the first phase of Bear Branch north of Van Dusen, or west of Van Dusen. And we have also done the dredging of Laurel Lakes to reduce a lot of the sediments from 20-plus years of lack of maintenance. Our next step right now is to do the second phase of Bear Branch restoration, which will tie in from Van Dusen all the way to the Upper Lake, which we just stretched a couple of years back. Can start with the presentation. I'll go through the introduction of the project, and Mr. Austin Byers will go through the technical part. If you have any questions, we'll answer questions at the end. All right. So as you know, Bear Branch is within the city of Laurel, and within Prince George's County, is a second-order stream and has a 1.7 square miles of drainage area. Currently, the project goals, the project limits are from east of Van Dusen Road to the upper lake of Laurel Lakes, which is the Ford Bay, like I said stated earlier, which we dredged back in 2014, and we completed in 2015. The project, so the goal of the project at this point is to eliminate the sediment due to active stream bed erosion and bank erosion, improve the water quality, as well as recreational quality and habitat within the Bear Branch watershed. We hope that with this project, we can actually meet, we hope with this project, we can actually meet a restoration of about 37 acres of impervious area and about 217 tons of nitrogen, 221 of phosphorus, and about 50,000 ton, pounds of sediment. Currently, the limits of the project is about 2,078 linear feet of the main stem. And we are actually also trying to restore, there's two tributaries, one which is off of Olive Branch. There's heavy erosion in that area, right next to a pond, which seems to be eroding and potentially causing issues later on. And another tributary is north of Laurel, the lake, and it's behind the community. There's a erosion gully that just kind of bypasses a couple of the stormwater management ponds currently. Prince George's County Hire Century Engineering. We have done a lot of work with them, and they have extensive experience with stream restoration, in trying to keep this stream restoration into a more natural state, which is, we, they developed two alternatives for this project. In Prince George's County, decided to, we review both of the alternatives, and we opted to go with a more natural concept, which will be more of a flood reconnection project instead of stabilization and rock. So Mr. Byers will actually go through.
Thank you, Joanna. So this first slide here just kind of shows, and I guess I'll have a few slides, but we'll show a little bit of the existing conditions, what's out there now, what the proposed approach is at the 30% level, and then an idea of what would be expected during construction, and ultimately what this would look like post-construction. So currently, as Joanna said, we've got, essentially, we've got a high bed load system, and that's what's both turning the sediment through the system and also adding sediment into the system from the bed and the banks. This is what resulted in the dredging project downstream. So with our project reach being immediately upstream of the lake, we're looking at addressing erosion in both the tributaries, as well as the main stem, and preventing, essentially preventing that sediment both from moving through the system, as well as from adding sediment into the system from the bed and bank. Additionally, what you see here is like some exposed utilities. So there's, I believe, water and sewer lines that are exposed. If you can imagine, over time, when those lines were installed, there might have been three or four feet of cover over them, but the stream has cut down through all that sediment, eroded through it, and so now those lines are exposed. And what this does is kind of creates a negative feedback loop. So the further the stream gets downcut, the less access it has to its adjacent floodplain, and thus the debris jams occur, trees start to fall in, like you see in those pictures, and it just continues to get, to get worse unless we, you go ahead and change the next slide.
Do you all inspect the sewer lines?
Uh, no.
Part of this program?
Not as part of this program. We inspect.
No. We'll work with WSSC in coordination with them. They will review the plan, and if we foresee any issues, they'll, you know, they'll normally go and do their own inspection.
Here's just a kind of a brief overview of what this approach is, this floodplain restoration approach. And I apologize, the graphic may be a little bit difficult. We have some handouts afterwards, as well as the board. But what we're doing is bringing the channel inward up, back up, and we're also cutting the floodplain out wider. And what this does is allow for all the storm events to get out on the floodplain and reduce the stress. So essentially, by that way, we're getting all the frequent storm events out on the floodplain. That retains carbon within the system and keeps the system, that no longer possesses the energy to mobilize the sediment and actually move it downstream. So no longer possesses the energy to erode the banks, and it no longer possesses the energy to move the sediment through the system. And we're looking at a complete, as Joanna said, we're looking at a complete project here. We're trying to create an ecosystem, we're trying to create a stream and wetland complex. We're going to be doing tree plantings. We're looking to create a habitat, a holistic approach, as opposed to kind of spot treatment, or just trying to address, you know, this protecting this one utility line or this one stream bank. And then we do get also nutrient processing, which is some of that total nitrogen that we were talking about earlier. Go ahead and change this slide, too. This is the, the main stem portion, and what you see in the lower right-hand corner there is Tributary Two. You can see sort of the black kind of shading there towards the outline, and the green, that represents the entire footprint of the project. And then you can see where the stream alignment would be and some additional wetland creation areas adjacent to that. And you can see right now, that section there comes from Van Dusen, it's complete from Van Dusen, all the way down to the Ford Bay there at the upper lake. Go ahead, next slide. This is just Tributary One, which is another portion of the project, same approach, just on a smaller scale, smaller drainage area. But the exact same approach, where we're, we're cutting the floodplain down, we're creating access from the, so the stream can access its floodplain, creating a holistic approach here. So maybe, I'll go ahead and change the next slide, and talk a little bit about the, here, these are, these are a cross-section view that kind of helps illustrate what the existing and proposed conditions are. And you can see that area that's shaded there on the left, that's where that old channel would be, and you can see where the bank heights, you know, the bank heights right now might be 10 or 11 feet, and in the post-restation condition, they're only going to be about a half a foot or six inches. So that's where you can see the channel's now going to be relocated. We're going to supply a small length of gravel for the channel to rest upon and create base level control. And then the rest of the floodplain will be kind of open access for internal pools, wetlands, different habitat features. And then scroll down just a little bit more, there's a, this is the, the other Tributary Two, and it's, it's a similar approach, but it essentially doesn't have a, an actual channel. So its end product looks more like a grass swale that you would see on the side of a road. It's less, this channel's going to be ephemeral, so it doesn't have the same hydrology, doesn't have the perennial permanent flow that the main stem has. Keep going. A little bit about the construction. So I chose these photos to kind of represent a project that was very similar in approach to this project, and you can kind of see the type of equipment that would be used. They would have, you know, they're going to have track loaders, dump trucks, excavators, they're going to be running pumps to pump the water around while they do this work. There's going to be multiple points of access. And you can see here through the corridor that there is, they're going to be clearing a corridor of existing trees in order to create, in order to cut that floodplain down and create the floodplain connection that we need. And then that's kind of what you see in that top right picture, and then in the, in the lower-left picture, you see them installing the subgrade gravel. And then finally, in the lower-right picture, this is a picture taken immediately after construction, where they have some biodegradable matting on there, they're seeded, the seed hasn't come up. So keep your mind on these, just because at the end, there's a photo, the photo at the end of the slide for questions. It's the same site a year afterwards, that shows kind of how it's, how it's screened up. Oh, timeline-wise, I think we're nine to 12 months. We often work around the stream closure with the state, so depending on when the project goes to bid, or how many crews the contractor's utilizing, that timeline may be, may be generous, but it's hard to say. So this early in the design stage, we kind of wanted to err on the side of caution. And they will be doing, you know, so they'll kind of, they'll come in and they'll mobilize, the contractor will put in all the entrances, and they'll put in the construction fence and kind of create a boundary for the, a temporary one, constructive fence, like you see in those photos, create a boundary for the project, and they'll start clearing, and then they'll go right into construction, then ultimately planting. Yeah, this last is just the same site you just saw a year after construction. I believe this photo was actually taken before they came back in and installed the larger caliber tree plantings. They usually like to get the understory, install the grass installed first, and then come back and do the, the trees. So you can kind of get an idea of what this type of project would look like post-restation. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions? Smalls.
Good evening. Sorry I had to step out. But I'm curious, and maybe you touched on this, but I presume you're familiar with the, the project that was undertaken a few years ago on Van Dusen Road.
Behind the Fire Department. Behind the Fire Department.
Behind the Fire Department, exactly.
The mess behind the Fire Department.
Is that a Prince George's County project?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
$800,000 worth.
Yeah.
800?
800,000.
Okay, it's not a stream project.
No, they dug holes, it was supposed to capture this and capture that.
Or the fire retention.
Is, is, okay.
I'm sorry, Fred. Go ahead.
Well, well, regardless of whether it was before your time or not, I presume, now that we've, we've identified what it is, can you tell us, first of all, if it's doing what it was designed to do? And secondly, how does that, if at all, tie into this project?
Part of the project, they're supposed to be inspected every three years to find out whether they're functioning according to their design. And as of right now, I believe, last inspection was two years ago. As of two years ago, they weren't working properly. There might be need, need maintenance in the next year, probably before the next inspection period. It is part of our water quality, which is a part of our MS4 and MBS mandates. So it's not tied in directly to this one, but it's part of the whole umbrella of water quality.
Now, for those of us who don't really know, what is that supposed to do? I mean, what is it, what is its function? Because...
Well, the function of it is to treat the runoff and basically remove any pollution from, from the asphalt, anywhere the, from the stormwater runoff. It basically goes into the filter material, the soils, and it captures any pollution, nitrogen, phosphorus, oils. So in, at the end, once the filter through, the water should be cleaner and, you know, discharged back into the stream system.
Okay. And I know that's not why, why you all are here tonight, but my real interest was how that tied into this, and you've answered that.
Let me, let me just add something to that, if I could. That money was originally supposed to service the Upper Bay. I'm going to say it. That council person that was on the county council decided to do something else because, and they did, they spent the money over there. Now, the Patuxent River Commission, which I'm the chair of, is very much involved in MS4 permits, and we don't think it's doing what it was supposed to, no matter what the county says. Are you the engineering firm that had to assess it two years ago? We can't even get a response. I've asked several times. But we're going to ask again. The Patuxent River Commission is responsible for the whole Patuxent watershed. And it's legislatively mandated, and we can't get, we can't get a comment from the county. But that's all right, I'm just, just pointing, that's why I call it a mess. The trees died, what was that, about 12, 13 years ago, 14 years ago?
Was it that long?
That was, wow, that's when Tom was there. Yeah. But again, I, I'm really concerned. I mean, I applaud what you're doing, by the way. There's some other work being done on the, on the streams up in West Laurel, is that correct? Where they're doing stream bank restoration?
There are other entities, I believe, Public Works is doing another one on Conti Road, but they're doing the pulver.
I mean, there has to be a concerted effort. The company that's supposed to do the four bays in the Laurel Lake, he's on my commission. The comment made in passing was, if they don't take the silt out of the Lower Bay, those four bays will not work. Now, I'm not an engineer. I need to listen to 33 different people. Okay? So I think we need a concerted effort. I applaud you. That stretch is, was it 2,000 feet long, I think?
Yes, 1,000.
Yeah. And that's considered, that was forest set aside when we did Wellington, if I remember correctly. Not supposed to cut any trees down. The issue of snags, or dams, or blockages, I mean, I've listened to more different people tell me that both of them have merit on a waterway. And I, and we see a lot in Laurel where we've had to clear up after storms. But I only hope that on this section, that we do something that lasts more than two or three years. I mean that. Because it's our money. It's your money, my money. Okay? Is this coming, is this improvement coming out of the, the rainwater pool? You know what I'm talking about?
You mean the water quality, the storm drain?
I call it the rainwater pool, not the tax. Not the, is this coming out of that pool?
It is coming out of a water quality fund, yes.
Okay. So again, no doubt in my mind, eventually, somebody will have their way, and they'll do away with that. So whatever we're spending now, we need to make sure we spend so that it has lasting impact on the environment. Okay? Not a question, just making a statement, okay? Any other questions of our presenters here?
Mayor?
Will you all, since there's a community in that area, would you all be holding community meetings? Do you want us to work with you? What is...
Yes, our first step was to present the project to the council, just to make sure we get, our next step right now is to actually set up a public meeting with both communities and sending notifications. I have talked to Ms. Christian Paul, and also with Mr. Allen, just to get all the information and get the HOA information, disseminate, and send that information to hold a public meeting.
Will we be...
Don't forget, there's two different homeowners associations over there.
Yeah.
One and two, just so you know, okay?
Will you be, at the very end, will you do any fencing, like they've done in other areas, or is it just all open, all natural?
There'll be no, there'll be no open water after. There'll be no, there'll be no open water after the pools and what we're looking at. It's something that, you know, you could get over.
Yeah. Now, I want to thank you. This is long overdue. We've worked hard, I think, asking the county to take a look at this and several others. I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just to touch base about the Patuxent, actually Sentry is working with us to do a Patuxent watershed assessment. We're coming up with a couple of new areas of stream restoration that we could actually improve in the future.
Yeah, the difficulty with the Patuxent River Commission, it's in seven different counties. And I've done the road show where I had to go speak to councils in several different jurisdictions, and getting them to agree on anything, because all of them don't have MS fours. They, 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 they push that off to, that responsibility off to somebody else. Again, whatever we can do, I mean, if you need help from the Patuxent River Commission, we write a lot of letters. That's all I can tell you. Feel free to contact me.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Michelle, you're on the hook again for questions.
It's fine.
And I'll open up the floor for questions on the revenue side.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt one second. The supplementary package that I gave you, I talked about the categories on the pie charts, but there's also this table. I just wanted to touch base on that. So the structure of this is to take the department categories, general government, public safety, public works, parks and recreation, and non-departmental, and give you those totals in black. Underneath each of those shows a deduction or the directly, the direct revenue that those sections correspond with. After that, in the next column, it shows the amount of tax revenue that's required to complete the funding after you already account for the direct revenues. And then in the final column, it shows how much of the 71 cent tax rate each of those categories needs for its funding.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Sellers, I was trying to figure out on page, I lost my page. Excuse me for a second. On page 21, under Department of Health, I was trying to find out what department was responsible for that, like what city service would be responsible, Department of Health? I know that it's under the county grant.
Yes, so if, if you look just above that, you see the account, our account number, 42512. So this is a line item for grants that are going to be received by the Youth Services Bureau. So we're going, the city is going to receive money from the county health department to supplement funding that program.
Okay. And like, what kind of services would you be providing using the Department of Health funding?
That's the, that's the Laurel Helping Hands, the Youth Services Bureau, so counseling for families and teens and other.
That's correct. It's, it's for counseling services, it's for programs. There's actually several grants, one coming from the governor's office on children that's funneled through the Department of Family Services, and then another one directly from Prince George's County Department of Family Services. And that's, and then there's a matching portion that the, that the city, a 25% match that the city has to agree to, and that's for all types of programs, drug and alcohol assessment, suicide hotline, programs in the school, both formal and informal counseling.
Okay. I think you answered my question.
Just so you, clarification, anybody else? You actually put it, coded it so we could start tracking it and know what's going in and what's coming in and what's going out. Is that...
Yes, sir. We created a separate revenue account.
You did able to track it a lot better and easier instead of clumping it in, so you did that.
And there's also a separate expenditure budget within parks and recreation this time.
Right, so if he wants to ask to see that, we'll be able to run those numbers eventually, and you'll be able to see it right away.
Yes, it'll all be separate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sidnor. Any other questions of Michelle on the revenue side? Ms. Smalls?
I do have a couple of questions. Actually, Michelle, my first question is maybe more administration than, than revenue. On the, regarding a special taxing district and the revenue, can you tell us how long we've, we've had that in place?
Since FY 2009.
Okay. And has that percentage increased at all from that time? In other words, have we raised the tax?
We have not raised that tax rate. We incrementally added different sections of the commercial areas over, I think it was a three-year period.
So any increased revenue is the result of more entities being taxed than, than raising? So I'd just like to direct this to, to the administration now more than, than to you directly. In terms of any consideration as the city grows, we've talked over, over time about, you know, a circulator and things like that. Would perhaps in the future, some consideration be given to examining, you know, that tax rate with the possibility of seeking, raising funds to, to fund any other kind of, of transportation needs for that corridor?
I think, Ms. Smalls, if you remember, the reason we put this into place was we were looking for a dedicated funding, not just from City of Laurel, from Prince George's, Anarota Howard, Howard County, where we were dealing with the regional bus system, because the system was failing drastically, and, and we had to figure out a way to be able to provide more funding. Now, with that said, the special taxing district has a criteria that has to be met before you do that. I can't sit here and tell you the entire criteria, but it has to be used. So if we, if you remember, we, we took this along the Route One corridor strip, because that's where most of, you know, back and forth for jobs and others. We phased that in over, I think, almost like a three-year period. We have not raised it, but more importantly, we need to make sure that the bus and other things are still being utilized along that corridor. If not, you have to phase them out. So we look at it at each budget cycle. We'll look at it again. I'll, I'll have to get the criteria. I'm pretty sure there's some type of a criteria to place a special taxing district in, in place, which at that time, we met all the criteria. So we look at that at each cycle. I just can't sit here and quote the, the law on, on that, but we'll get it for you and make sure everybody has it, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my other question and final question, Michelle, is under our other local taxes, under the admissions and amusement tax. You mentioned in your presentation that 5% of the gross ticket sales is what the, the city receives. Do we receive anything for refreshment sales?
No.
Not at all?
That's why whenever we want to know what...
That's why whenever we want to know what movies are getting ready to play there, Michelle knows them all, because she's figuring out whether they're going to be a blockbuster or not, which is more A and A for us.
At least the superhero movie.
Well, I'm figuring out how much is going to impact my wallet, because, especially the refreshments. Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Anything else on the revenue side?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On page 19 and the top of page 20, you had talked about, under licensing, you talked about the 5% subscription fees, and then you said for Verizon and Comcast, is that 5% total, or is that 5% each?
It's franchise agreements, 5% each.
Each?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on a franchise agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Anything else of Michelle on revenues? Okay. We'll move to expenditures. Is that where you want to go next, Michelle?
Fine with me.
Huh?
It's fine with me.
Let's do it.
Which department do you want?
Office of the Mayor.
Lou Anne's not here, so...
Oh, okay. So do you want to put that off till next week?
No, no, she's got, Sarah's got it.
Sarah, do you have the office of the Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Office of the Mayor, the budget page starts on page 30.
Okay.
This is for, provides funding for the operations of the mayor's office. The first section is salaries, the cover for the mayor and two full-time staff, chief of staff and executive assistant to the mayor, who are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the mayor's office and represent the mayor and the city at delegation and committee meetings during the legislative session. The salaries also includes executive performance awards for senior management staff. The mayor's summer jobs program, this year will have 13 Laurel youth residents, ages 14 to 17, for eight weeks, beginning July 2nd. Paid minimum wage will be $10.10. The next item is legal expenses, primarily for the legal services provided by our city solicitor and other legal resources as necessary. Outside services covers the federal legislative advocacy, monitoring legislation at the federal level, and miscellaneous property appraisals as necessary. The next item is membership dues for advocacy affiliations. Some of the major memberships that we have are Maryland Municipal League, Prince George's County Municipal Association, U.S. Conference of Mayors, Washington Council of Governments, and National League of Cities. Smaller but less important memberships are the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Maryland Municipal Clerks, Friends of the Patuxent, Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce, and Laurel Board of Trade. Per diem, travel budgets, they all correspond to approved conferences and training venues, which include Maryland Municipal League conferences, National League of Cities conferences, and municipal clerks' conferences and training venues. Office supplies, miscellaneous and postage, as that we continue to save money in, in those line items as the use of technology increases and improves. The next one is mayor's contingency. This covers funding for unforeseen circumstances and special initiatives. Special events funds various events that we host and also covers any unanticipated but necessary citywide events. And then for equipment, we don't have any anticipated equipment needs for the mayor's office this year. Is there any questions on...
Any questions on that part of the budget?
The, the next budget that the mayor's office administers is the community permissions budget, which begins on page 35. This provides funding to promote and support city events, community events, civic improvements, and the general welfare of the city. We also have in this budget, property building, rental and lease, lease agreements with City of Laurel Community Redevelopment Authority for the lot at 378 Main Street. The next item is advertising and printing. This is used for various needs in the promotion of citywide events, miscellaneous, other informational literature to be, you know, handed out to citizens. Other gifts and awards, this covers our Golden Shovel Program for the recognition of beautification efforts by city residents, which runs through the spring and summer months. The next item is contributions to nonprofits. This provides funding for miscellaneous civic organizations of the city. Contributions for special events, that's where the annual Fourth of July celebration contribution is. Special events, this covers our Hometown Heroes Banner Program, annual open house, and other events as necessary. And then we also have $1,000 in the non-departmental training budget for miscellaneous seminars and other training opportunities for the mayor and mayor's office staff. That's the conclusion of the report. Is there any questions?
Any questions of this part of the budget?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question.
Ms. Sidnor?
On page 36, First Generation College of Bound, I think that's awesome program. I was just wondering, is it guaranteed that any Laurel residents is going to be accepted in that program, or just as money we funding to be in the program?
They're Laurel residents as well. They're in with our cluster of schools here.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this part of the budget? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Move to Ms. Ralph for the city council.
Mr. President, thank you. If you'd go to page 39, we start with the city council budget. This is prepared along with comment and input from the council president and the other council members. In this budget, we provide the funding for the interpreters that we have at our city council meetings, and we often cover when there are other special events that requires an interpreter. It also includes our membership dues. We split the dues with the mayor's office for the Maryland Municipal League and the Prince George's County Municipal Association. This budget provides for the advertising for any meetings, any legal advertising that we need to, to have, printing and letterhead, office equipment, and we also have an expense allowance for council members for certain things that you would like to do. There's a per diem that includes, that corresponds with the travel and training through the Maryland Municipal League and the National League of Cities. The hotel and travel and the conferences and conventions, they all provide for the five council members to attend the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference, the Fall Conference, and then three of our council members to participate in the National League of Cities, those council members that have served and serve on committees with the National League of Cities. You also see an expense for the Prince George's County Scholarship Breakfast and the Legislative Dinner. That's for the counselor, the council's attendance at those events. There is funding for presentations, such as awards that the council members may decide to give out, a contingency for the president for certain special presentations that, that he deems or the council deems necessary. We also have $1,000 for special events. This in the past has included funding when we have hosted the Prince George's County Municipal Association meetings here in the city. That's where that funding would come from. And that's the city council budget. Any questions?
Questions of Ms. Ralph?
On the city council budget? Thank you, Ms. Ralph.
If you... We'll now move on to the clerks' budget, and that's on page 43. This budget includes the salaries for clerk and administrative assistant. That would be Anna Navarro and myself. It also provides funding for outside services, our city code online through MuniCode. They have recently started charging an administrative fee, so we have had an additional $450 in that account. Under membership dues, it provides for the clerk and the administrative assistant to participate in the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. That's the organization where we get our training, and I'm very proud to announce that Anna Navarro has just received her certified municipal clerk status. She's been working on that for a long time now, and we're very happy for her. We also have memberships at Sam's Club for when we need to go and get candy for parades and any other event we might have here. Advertising again for special or required meetings. Per diem and conference registration for the clerk and the administrative assistant to attend certain functions through the MML and the IIMC, as well as the clerk to attend the National League of Cities Conference. Funding also in here for the Prince George's County Legislative Dinner and the Scholarship Breakfast. And that's the clerks' budget. Any questions?
Questions of Ms. Ralph?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ralph. Next, we're going to move to the, oh, I'm sorry, elections.
Mr. President, the election budget is on page 46. We have budgeted for an election, should one be necessary, and we will adhere and follow all requirements of the city code. all requirements of the City Code. That's all that is in that budget.
A question of Ms. Ralph on the elections budget.
Are you talking like a special election or regular?
Yes, sir, it would be a special election. That's what we're providing for in this one, yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Okay. That completes Ms. Ralph's presentation. We'll move to Mr. Fleming, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Administrator's Budget starts on page 47 and goes through page 51. The City Administrator is appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the City Council, and serves as the chief administrator of all sort of the city government. In addition to the day-to-day management of the city government, the City Administrator is responsible for insurance management, budget preparation and administration, capital improvement budget preparation, emergency operations, and other projects as assigned by the mayor. The City Administrator directs and coordinates the general administration of the city government. The operations of each department are monitored to assure compliance with policies and legislation established by the mayor and city council. Responsibilities include submitting an annual budget, advising the mayor and city council on the financial condition and needs of the city, authorizing all purchases required under the charter, and the emergency preparedness of city government. The City Administrator's Office provides budget oversight for fiscal responsibility as well. Along with the Budget and Personnel Department, this office participates in the annual negotiations on the tax differential with the county tax, county task force for the tax differential program. The City Administrator is also the executive officer of the City of Laurel Planning Commission, the City of Laurel Historic District Commission, and the Ethics Commission. Additionally, this office provides for the Chair of the City of Laurel Risk Management Committee and the Chair of the Laurel Accident Review Board. The City Administrator's Office is staffed by the City Administrator, obviously, the Deputy City Administrator, Risk Management Officer, Emergency Manager, Safety Compliance Officer, Administrative Assistant Two, and Administrative Specialist. The committee assignments for the City Administrator's Office are the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, the City of Laurel Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, Board of Trustees of the city's retirement plans, ex officio member of the Ethics Commission, Maryland Municipal League, Prince George's County Municipal Association, the city's risk management program, Laurel Park Community Committee, the Fort Meade Community Covenant Council, the Fort Meade Regional Growth and Management Council, the Regional Transit Agency Commission, and the Regional Transit Agency Partners Group. Our budget, the budget detail starts on page 51. Our budget encompasses the salaries for the staff that I just mentioned, legal services for the Ethics Commission, outside services for shredding services, employee health and wellness, and we also have funds for graphic arts for programs that we assemble on our, on our own and disseminate every year. Under membership dues, we have added the city, Deputy City Administrator to the, I apologize, skipped one. We've added Amelia in our office to the Sam's Club subscription that we have, there's a membership dues for that. Under subscriptions, we have added the Dropbox subscription that is currently used by staff to disseminate information and receive information from the mayor and council, mayor and council offices, as well as the City Administrator's Office. We have added the Deputy City Administrator to the MML Convention. We have also added the Emergency Manager to the Maryland Municipal League Convention as well. He will be doing a presentation for emergency management at that. Adding those individuals also impacts our hotel travel budget and the convention's other budget. We've also added the Deputy City Administrator to the Maryland Emergency Management Conference. As you recall, we have recently obtained a membership with the Capital Region's Council of Governments, and that is one of the functions that the Deputy City Administrator will fulfill as our obligation to the, to this group. We've also added a line for the health fair. You recall, we had a city health fair for the first time this year, and we have added a line for that. Our budget total is $596,499, which is a 3.46 increase over last year. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, sir.
We'll now move to Department of Budget and Personnel Services. Michelle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our budget begins on page 53 of the document. Department of Budget and Personnel Services is responsible for all the financial administration of the city's budget, all the funds for the compilation of the budget and the capital improvement program. We administer our own payroll and monthly retirement benefit payments. Excuse me. We also, billing our own personal property tax, we issue those bills, although the real estate is on the, is included on the county bill. We obviously monitor the budgets for compliance with their limitations, as well as work with employees on their benefits. This budget provides the funding for what is already our current staffing level of eight full-time employees, and we have funding for auxiliary position. We actually have two young people that will be working a total of about 25 hours a week as auxiliaries, doing some clerical funds, or clerical work for us. The staffing is, myself, the director, deputy director, an HR specialist. We have, we will have three fiscal specialists, two, and a fiscal specialist, three. These positions are broken down into areas of concentration, such as revenue, accounts payable, payroll, inventory, and budget. We have an administrative specialist who, excuse me, is the primary cashier. But in as much as is possible and necessary to work with both the public and the employees, we work really hard on cross-training in our office. So the budget figures are actually starting on page 57. You can see the compensation. This budget also provides funds necessary to pay our independent auditor to conduct the FY 2018 audit. We have the banking services expenditure line item between our monthly fees for our 25 various bank accounts, as well as the fees that we are assessed for accepting credit card payments, both in person and online now. We have outside services budget, which includes items like pre-employment physicals, background check, police promotion exams. We have provided funding in this budget for HR consulting as needed. As you're aware, Mr. Green will be retiring at the end of June after 40 and a half years of service to the city. And while he has been working with Mrs. Woods on the day-to-day processes that he's been involved in and that he has been performing, should we require any sort of HR expertise or to have him assist any further, then we would have those funds to pay. We also have some memberships, the Government Finance Officers Association, as well as the Maryland GFOA, and public notice advertising fees if needed, and for any special advertising, but also for jobs, vacancies. We also have pre-printed envelopes, as well as our check stock, and then our tax forms. We do minimal printing of the budget anymore. We have very few, if any, requests for a hard copy to be provided to the public. We have our, obviously, our computer and office supplies, as well as the employee awards program and postage. And that's our budget.
On the Budget Personal Services.
Other questions? On page 58, looking at a line item, I lost track of it. Annual Luncheon Award Luncheon. Excuse me, let me go back to it. Yeah. Yeah, the annual award luncheon.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so there's a program administered by our office where we have an annual program where we have a nomination process, so any employee could nominate another employee for something specific they did. We have different categories. We have Employee of the Year, Meritorious Service. We have Team Achievement Awards for a group of people that did something together. There is a leadership award given to a member of the management staff, and so collectively the department heads sit down with Mr. Green, who provides for us those nominations, and we vote on those selections. From that, plaques are prepared, citations are prepared. All the awards have a monetary award associated with it, so we need to issue live checks for those, and then we provide a catered luncheon as well. Also at that awards banquet, I was given the service award, so in increments of five years of employment, city employees are afforded the opportunity to pick certain gifting levels for five, 10, 15, and so on, years of service to the city.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is real good. Only problem I have with it is that the catered luncheon, so I'm going to just sit on that one for a while, think about that. That's the only problem I have with it. Any food, I have an issue with it.
Any other questions?
That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Let me just ask, any other questions, Michelle? Let me just ask, it's down here, so for those that haven't been here, why don't you just explain what GASP 45 and 68 are?
The Government Accounting Standards Board, which is a private, non-government body, actually sets accounting guidelines and guidance for state and local government, and they issue pronouncements, most of which come with an unfunded mandate, because either we need to, well, we always need to have a study done, one thing or another, and then implement those standards. So GASP 45 relates to other, excuse me, other post-employment benefits. So that requires that the actuaries perform one of their analysis to see how much the future post-employment benefits that the city offers will cost, and then is to be recorded in the city's financial statements as a liability. GASP 68 requires that we record the unfunded pension liability, yes, the total unfunded pension liability of the pension plans as a liability to the city.
It's currently at about, it's approaching 30%, is that correct? I think it's 71%, 72% were funded. I'm sorry, Mike. 74. Okay. We need to understand, I mean, I've spent a lot of time on pensions over the last 20 years, too much time sometimes. The, it's a moving target of the worst kind. I mean, the mortality tables aren't always correct. The actuaries are, I mean, I've worked with actuaries, they do a great job. But again, it is incumbent upon this council and the mayor to ensure that 30 years out and 40 years out, there's still money in the pot to pay what was promised to our people that are on pensions. We can't print the money here. We need to make sure that we're giving our best shot to ensuring that that's there. That's why that's important. The other thing is just, there's another group, there's GAAP principles, Generally Acceptable Accounting Principles. Now, that's a whole different set of principles that you need to adhere to in your operation, is that correct? And the auditors look at that.
Yes.
And they'll beat us on the head if we're not adhering to those rules. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, and there are some variances between GAAP and government accounting.
They don't always mesh. Okay, so it is very complicated, and I don't have the answer, I've just been looking at it. And the rules keep changing in many aspects. I mean, the social security rules are changing all the time. They're adversely going to impact anybody that's part and parcel of the social security system over the next 20 years. So again, I appreciate everything you all do, and I know that we pay very careful attention. We used to get, when I first came to the council, we used to hear from our auditors where we had some problems, and we have, I didn't ask you this year, you noticed I didn't ask. Is the checking account in balance?
Sir.
I'll ask. It was, was it $10,000 out? We couldn't figure out where it was, so we made what was called a book entry. That's how responsive Michelle's area is to dealing with problems, and got agreement from the auditors, I remember that was a good approach. So again, thank you very much, Michelle. All right, if you have no further questions, Michelle, let's move to Department of Communications. Audrey, you have the floor.
Good evening. As you know, the Department of Communications is in charge of disseminating information to residents, employees, and visitors of the City of Laurel. We want to talk about all things Laurel in every way that we can to get information to all of those stakeholders that I mentioned. Our staff includes a communications director, myself, I have an assistant communications director. We also have a number of technical people who help us with Laurel TV. Besides the television and communications needs, my office is also in charge of the passport office and also the front desk. So we are in charge of staffing those positions as well. Our budget begins on page 62, the details of the budget, beginning with salaries for the staff and our auxiliaries, which are a big part of our department. We also occasionally use freelance producers, reporters, photographers to cover major stories of interest to the residents of Laurel. One new thing that we're going to be doing in the next year is closed captioning for a lot of the programming that we have on Laurel TV. The city has done a great job of taking care of our hearing impaired residents and viewers for the mayor and city council meetings by having a signer at those meetings, but we're going to expand that program so that we make sure that we're ADA compliant. going to expand that program so that we make sure that we're ADA compliant and serving the needs of our hearing impaired viewers. And we've included that in this budget as well. We have a couple of advertising things that have been very successful for us. When we feel the need to do it, we will take out ads in the newspaper to let viewers and know about special programming and things like that, so we do have a budget for those types of items. We launched a campaign this year to get more people to sign up for our email alerts. It's been extremely successful, and we're going to continue that into the coming year as well. The next few items are all technical things that we need for Laurel TV, software and things like that to help us be more efficient in how we do our jobs. We do attend the MML Convention each year and the Alliance for Community Media, which is the huge event for PEG stations across the country. There's three thousand of them, so it's nice for us to be represented. And this year's convention is actually in Baltimore, so we have a big stake in planning that convention and being very visible with PEG stations across the country. The State Department increased, or put some new restrictions on how we mail our passports for processing, so our budget was increased slightly to cover that increase. What they're now requiring us to do is just putting fewer passport applications in each mailing package. So that means that the number of these huge envelopes that we mail to the State Department Processing Centers, that cost has gone up, so we've increased our budget to compensate for that. But the State Department, on the flip side of that, has increased the processing fee for passports. It's gone up from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars, so we'll actually be getting more money in the revenue side of things. So it's kind of a wash in some ways. We are making capital outweigh purchases this year. We have replaced, since I've been here in the last four years, three of the cameras in this council chamber. There's two left, they were all purchased at the same time. We're having some issues, and we anticipate replacing those, so we have budgeted for that. We also want to make sure that Room Four, which is another room here, is fully operational. If we ever had an emergency where this council chamber was not able to be used, we have another place that we could broadcast emergency information to our residents, so we want to make sure that it is up to code and, you know, up to our standards of high definition and things like that. So we're going to be making sure that all the equipment is in there in case we need it. And as we saw with the BGE outage and some of the other things that we've had to deal with lately, being able to get information to our residents quickly is critical, so we're going to make sure that we have everything in place to do that. So unless you have any other questions, that's my presentation.
Any questions of Audrey, Mr. Smalls?
Ms. Smalls, under video, I'm sorry, under operating expenses, video productions, is that or in-house production or?
We have an independent contractor who, matter of fact, he's here a night, that helps us broadcast our government meetings, and we do about seventy of them a year, so part of that is to cover his fees for being here and help us with that.
Okay. Now, regarding the actual programming?
Yes.
That's on the air. There's been a dramatic improvement to the quality of the programming. My understanding had been that there's a fee, a charge, a cost for certain programming. Is that still?
We don't pay for any programming, no. And in fact, we search out things that are domain-free, copyright-free. We have established relationships with documentary filmmakers across the country and that allow us to broadcast their programs. We even have a relationship now with National Geographic that the domain-free, copyright-free, some of the nature shows, we're actually broadcasting those now. So when you turn on Laurel TV, our intent is for it to look like any other television station, not just your grandma's public access TV station.
Well, kudos to you and your staff, because the quality of those domain-free have greatly improved.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
From what they used to be. Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Do you want to just mention for a minute the awards that the station has won since you've come on board?
We have won six Telly Awards. Tellys are international communications awards. We're going up against the best of the best. The last year's round, there were thirteen thousand entries, all five continents, every state, all fifty states, and Laurel TV won two of them. So we're really proud of that accomplishment. And also, the other biggie is the Hometown Media Awards, which is a part of that alliance I mentioned, and that's our peers. Those are people who are doing the very same things that we're doing across the country, but New York, which is a lot larger than Laurel, we're all in the same boat. But we still manage to win Hometown Media Awards every year, like for our diabetes special, a piece that Joyce Jackson produced on athletes serving athletes. Those types of programs are getting national recognition.
All right. Any other questions of Audrey?
I have a question.
Yes.
The Public Information and Social Media Specialist?
Yes.
Under your direction?
Mm-hmm.
And the, I believe it's called the Public Relations Officer in the Laurel Police Department. What's the difference between the two?
Corinne Kovek is my Public Information Social Media Specialist. She's the one that is posting all of the Facebook, social media things that my department puts out. She helps me with press releases when I need her to. She also hosts several of our government programs, like Government to the People, which you are going to be the next one up on that. That show should be up on the air within the next few days. She also hosts Council Connections, for example, and she's a certified passport agent, so big difference in the amount of things that she can do, the different skills that she brings to the table for my department. The Public Relations Officer is with the Police Department, so you would have to ask the police chief how he plans to use her and how it differs from my position.
Are you still the face, in the event there's an emergency situation, police-related, fire-related, whatever, in the City of Laurel and it affects the city? Are you still the public face of the city or the Police Department or whatever? Is that going to change?
I think that some of those questions, you'd have to ask the Chief of Police, how he plans to use that person. I know that the last few incidents that we've had, I have been there and responded. We had recently a barricade situation. We both were there, I worked with her in concert with her, trying to teach her some of the things that I do in my department, so there is some continuity of operations if we need that. So I think those details are still being worked out.
Okay.
Let me try to... Audrey Barnes is the face of the City of Laurel when we talk about Department of Communications for the City of Laurel.
Thank you, Audrey.
Anything else? All right, it's ten minutes after eight. I'm going to call a close to the work session for the budget, and what we're going to do is the regular Mayor and City Council meeting for May fourteenth has been moved to Wednesday, May ninth, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. After the regular meeting, the budget work session will pick back up and will move to Department of Economics and Community Development. I want to thank all the staff for coming, and thank you for the work that you've done with the administration and putting the budget together, and I look forward to the rest of the budget work sessions.